Out here and be safe going home. Okay, we are on the air. So, welcome to June 26, Xenia City Council Regular Meeting. At this time, we will have an invocation by Pastor Al Raffit, Victory Life Christian Center, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, led by Councilman Dennis Probst. If you could all please stand.
Good evening, everybody. Let's bow our heads for a word of prayer. Heavenly Father, we just come before you tonight. Lord, first of all, we just thank you for this day. We thank you for your blessings upon our community and city. Father, we thank you for our city council tonight, the city administration, our madam law. Father, even our police department here in the city and all that the police do. And Lord, we just ask that you continue giving our leaders wisdom and discretion, Lord, the business they transact, all the decisions that they're making. We ask God that you give them grace for the responsibility that they carry and strength, Father. And Lord, we just ask that your hand of prosperity continue upon our community in Jesus' name, and amen.
The flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you Pastor Al. I appreciate the distance that you come for meetings. Really appreciate that. Thank you, Councilman Probst, for the Pledge of Allegiance. At this time, I'm going to call our meeting to order and ask for a roll call, please.
Mayor Herschel?
Here.
Councilman Reynolds?
Councilman Crawford?
Here.
Councilman Probst?
Here.
Councilman Walker?
Here.
Councilwoman Seres?
Here.
President Smith?
Here. At this time, I'm going to make a motion to excuse Councilman Reynolds. He informed us prior that he would not be at attendance today due to some personal business. Do I have a second on that motion?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Councilwoman Seres. Any discussion? All right, get a roll call to approve that absence, please.
Mayor Herschel?
Aye.
Councilman Crawford?
Aye.
Councilman Probst?
Aye.
Councilman Walker?
Aye.
Councilwoman Seres?
Aye.
President Smith?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. On our agenda is the approval of minutes from our June 9, 2025 Regular Meeting. We have the minutes before us. I'll entertain a motion to accept the minutes.
So moved.
Moved by Councilman Probst. Do we have a second?
A second.
Seconded by Councilman Walker. Any corrections or additions to the minutes? Seeing none noted, we'll go ahead and get a roll call to accept, please.
Mayor Herschel?
Aye.
Councilman Crawford?
Aye.
Councilman Probst?
Aye.
Councilman Walker?
Aye.
Councilwoman Seres?
Aye.
President Smith?
Abstain.
Motion carries.
Thank you. We have no special presentations scheduled for tonight's meeting, so that moves this next item into the agenda. Is opportunity for audience comments. This is where anyone in the audience tonight that would care to address city council may come to the podium. We do ask that you give us your name and address for the record, and we'll ask to limit your comments two to three minutes. If anyone cared to come forward, now's the time.
My name is LaShonda Oatnail. I reside at 320 North Columbus Street in Xenia, Ohio. I think it's only fair that if I can come up here and ask of something of you, and you actually do it, then I say thank you. The sign is awesome. We appreciate it. It has gotten people to pay attention and slow down, even if they were speeding before. So I thought it was fair that I say thank you to the council for doing what was asked. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That's very kind of you. We appreciate that. And for those that are here, that young lady had a request for a traffic control device on North Columbus Street because of speeding, and it does look like there's a sign up there. So thanks to our police department for putting effort to curb that. I know speeding is an issue everywhere, every neighborhood, but we certainly appreciate that, and thank you for the kind words to come forward and address us on that. So, sorry, didn't mean to take your time.
No, that's fine. I'm just going to come up and say the same thing. I just want to say, Curtis Simons, Chantilly, Virginia, I just wanted to thank the council for the efforts of supporting Lexington Park Group. We've been working closely. Eric started off. Brian's been very closely working with it. Ryan has been on top of everything. And I just want to say, from my part of helping assist with Lexington Park Group, and Clayton will be right behind me, that I want to say thank you. I really want to say thank you to the council. Great commitment. We had another, right after that happened, we had another anonymous commitment, which now brings our numbers very close to what we're trying to get. We still have a little work to do, but at least we're in motion. And after all the efforts that we've come here and asked the council to realize how important Lexington Park is to the history, the caring of the neighborhood, and also the city, I just want to say thank you. If you listened, and it took a little time, but you listened, and thank you very much. Appreciate that.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Simons.
Hello, my name is Clayton Brady. I reside at 370 Hollywood Boulevard, Xenia, Ohio. And again, much thanks and gratitude to the council. I was up at Lexington Park on Juneteenth, and Will Herschel, the mayor slash vice president, showed me something that I've never seen out of Will. I've known Will maybe three, four years now. And I used to, I knew I could always find him over there at the homeless shelter. But then when I seen him up there on Juneteenth, working as hard as he did in a short amount of, well, it wasn't a short amount of time, but anywhere from 2:00 to 9:00 o'clock that evening. But he was always working, always doing something. Not, he didn't have a down moment, never took a break. Reiterating on the signs, I worked with the county, Green County Engineering Department, uniform traffic control signs was my profession. And so, any time you can slow the public down, I know when I worked out on the road, scared half to death. Cars passing me 55 miles an hour, and I'm on the white line, is, burn, whatever. And it's a scary thought to be out there every day like that. And you cannot drive every person's vehicle. When I first started out working for the county, main thing was somebody eating a sandwich or changing the CD, or, well, 8-track back in the day, fixing their hair, going to work, makeup. And then you have your occasional driver that's drinking. Now we have cell phones. Now we have screens that they can look at their vehicle to distract them from what's in front of them. So my heart goes out to those that are doing my job that I used to do, and I pray for their safety on daily, because that's why I prayed for myself each and every day I went to work. But thanks again to the council. I want to welcome the new Carlos, Councilman Walker, Councilman Probst, and thanks. And anything you can do for Lexington Park Group is much deeply appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brady. Those that just joined us in the audience, this is Audience Comments Opportunity. If anyone would care to come forward. All right, seeing no one else come forward, we are going to close Audience Comments. We're going to move on to Old Business. Item A is Resolution 2025-20. This was tabled on March 27, 2025. Staff, we're still tabling that item at this time?
Recommendation is to leave it tabled.
Okay, great. All right, so no further discussion on that. We're going to move to our next item, Item B, which is Ordinance 2025-14. This is a public hearing tonight, levying assessments for the improvement of city streets and public lightways by the lighting there for year 2025. And this was introduced by Mayor Herschel at our last meeting. At this time, I'm going to turn the floor over to our city manager, if he has anything else he would like to add tonight.
Yeah, this is just as a reminder, the next step in the process for the broader streetlight assessment process. So again, it'd be expunging the current districts and applying one district citywide. So this is the next phase of that process.
All right, thank you very much. Any questions for city manager? All right, if none, I'm going to go ahead, and at this time, I'm going to open our public hearing and ask if anyone would care to come forward at this time and speak in favor of the assessment for improvement of city streets.
Lighting.
Lighting, not city streets.
Lighting, yes, the lighting of city streets. Thank you.
I know where our heart is.
That's right.
All right. We all go up there. That's right.
All right. All right, anyone care to speak either opposing or just to comment on that? If not, I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing. At this time, we had an introduction by the mayor at the June 9 meeting. Would you care to move that for passage?
Yes, I'll move for approval of ordinance 2025-14.
Thank you. Moved for passage by the mayor, and I'll ask for a second, please. Seconded by Councilman Crawford. Any further discussion?
Let me just one.
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, you know, this is, over the last couple of years, we've worked really hard to have a long-term maintenance plan for a lot of our infrastructure. And street lighting is one of those pieces of infrastructure. The stormwater is another one. But you now have the funding and the planning for that, the curbs and gutters as well. And we've got another item here coming up later on to provide some funding for the streets. But when you put those things all together, obviously, we have the water sewer, you know, through the waterfront that's had some long-term funding available to it. But this really wraps up a pretty complete package of the infrastructure of the city and allows us, you know, once again, to put another critical part of that planning for the long-term sustainment and maintenance and care for some pretty critical parts of the infrastructure. So this is well needed, and thanks for the staff for getting all the legislation and the planning for that, so.
All right, thank you very much. Any other comments to piggyback on the mayor? No? All right, we'll go ahead and ask for a roll call, please.
Mayor Herschel?
Aye.
Councilman Crawford?
Aye.
Councilman Probst?
Aye.
Councilman Walker?
Aye.
Councilwoman Seres?
Aye.
President Smith?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Our next item under Old Business, Ordinance 2025-15. This is also a public hearing tonight, authorizing the sale of city-owned properties located at 607 South Monroe, 475 East Church Street, 476 East Second, 536 East Second, 656 East Second, and 105 Jackson Street. And this was introduced by Councilwoman Faith Seres at the June 9 meeting. At this time, I'm going to go ahead and turn the floor back over to Mr. Mayorman, or is that Mr. Baker?
I cover it.
Is that you?
So this would authorize a sale of those properties as indicated, again, to three buyers, Tri-Power LLC, G Custom Homes LLC, and Emery Builders LLC. And that's for the properties as listed in your agenda report at the corresponding prices. We staffed to go through the process of soliciting offers, and as authorized by council, sought to negotiate best prices for these properties. And the intent is this would move through our home preservation program. So again, we're excited to see folks looking at infill reinvestment in our community and development for owner-occupied homes. And so we're recommending approval of the ordinance to authorize these sales. And of course, that would require this evening a public hearing as well.
All right, thank you. Comments or questions for Mr. Mayorman at this time regarding the sale of properties? And this time, I'm going to open up a public hearing on this resolution, ask anyone if they would care to come forward and speak either in favor or against regarding Ordinance 2025-15, which is authorizing the sale of these properties. If anyone would care to come forward, now's the time to do so. We're not seeing anyone come forward on this public hearing, so we're going to close that. This item was introduced for passage by Councilwoman Faith Seres. Would you care to move?
Yes, I would like to move for approval of the Ordinance 2025-15, please.
Thank you. Moved for passage by Councilwoman Seres. Do we have a second?
No, seconded.
Seconded by Councilman Crawford. If there's no other questions, we'll go ahead and get a roll call.
I just have a quick comment.
Yeah.
I'm sure it's Councilman Probst. Yeah, I know this is, you know, actually, it doesn't seem like a lot just selling off these few parcels, but it's, we're selling these to home builders who are going to be backfilling these lots and building houses on these lots. There's one currently being built on, what, Second Street? So I would encourage you guys to just drive by it, take a look, see what the quality type of homes that this builder, one of the builders, is building in the community and backfilling some of these vacant lots to make sure that, you know, kind of revitalize some of these neighborhoods. And I think it's actually a very big step forward, so. Thank the staff again for their work in getting these sold.
All right, thank you, Councilman Probst. I agree with that. Any other comments or questions?
Is there any?
Not at this time, I'm sorry. Yeah. All right, at this time, we'll go ahead and get a roll call, please.
Mayor Herschel?
Aye.
Councilman Crawford?
Aye.
Councilman Probst?
Aye.
Councilman Walker?
Aye.
Councilwoman Seres?
Aye.
President Smith?
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, thank you very much. Next item is New Business. This is Resolution A, which is Resolution 2025-31. This is declaring the necessity of levying a property tax in excess of 10 mil limitation for street purposes and requesting certification from the Green County Auditor. So at this time, we'll turn the floor over to city manager and Mr. Mayorman.
Thank you, sir. The direction of city council staff has prepared Resolution 2025-31, which is the required first step should council intend to move forward with the ballot measure seeking a property tax for the purpose of replacing and maintaining local streets. The measure suggests a formal levy, which would generate an estimated $2.34 million per year. Tax increase under such terms would add an additional $140 to the total tax of an owner of a $100,000 property. As directed by council, the ballot language would be constructed such that tax proceeds would be specifically limited to street rehab and replacement purposes. Additional revenues are desperately needed for this purpose and would be added to the current annual spending on street replacement, which we've been averaging in the ballpark of $100 million, excuse me, $1 million plus. I wish we had $100 million to fix the problem. The age condition of our roadways, decades of neglect, and a high cost of construction services and asphalt materials necessitate a substantial increase in the overall funding that we're putting toward, you know, improving this problem. If council approves this measure and intends to move forward, staff would present the resolution to proceed with the ballot measure in July. I also want to offer a couple of additional updates because it's germane to this discussion. So the General Assembly has been involved in the process of putting together the next biennial budget. We've had a lot of dialogue with council about some of the various non-financial elements that are being written into that budget bill. And so a couple of updates, and this is as of a conversation with Councilman Reynolds about 20 minutes ago. Various portions of House Bill 335 have been, in fact, quite a few of those provisions from that bill have been incorporated into state budget. But he clarified that the 60-vote threshold for new tax measures was not included. So assuming nothing else moves forward in the foreseeable future with that, then, you know, then the threshold would remain the 50-plus-one for this. The inside millage piece is not in the state budget bill. It did not make that. Now, what we're hearing through various sources, though, is that the House is likely to come back with a consolidated property tax measure. What will be incorporated into that bill is hard to know. There are four or five bills that have been introduced in this session so far that amend property tax policy in some way, shape, or form. Again, House Bill 335 was one of those. Quite a few of those provisions have been incorporated into the budget. We'll also have to see what the governor can line item veto and if he chooses to exercise that authority with some of these provisions. And I suspect we'll know that within the next maybe 48 hours. The budget has to be implemented by midweek next week. But I think between the governor's office and the General Assembly, they'd like to have this done by the weekend. So I think we'll know in the next couple of days with a little more certainty. So again, council had directed us to present this. That's the first step in the process. It does not compel council to move forward. We would have to come back after this stage of the process with another resolution, a resolution of necessity directing us to move forward with it. And so that's where the rubber will meet the road. So you have a little window of opportunity here to see what happens at the state and then confer among yourselves.
Perhaps the asphalt meeting the road.
Right, yeah, yeah, yeah. So again, you know, if that impacts your thinking tonight one way or another, there's no harm in doing this. But again, there's still some uncertainty as to where things will go at the state level.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Mayorman?
Mr. Mayorman, just for clarity here this afternoon, is the timeline resolution now, if it's not, are you saying if we don't make a decision today, we have time to make that decision in the future?
No, in order, if you wanted to, in fact, pursue a property tax, you do need to take this action this evening, but that doesn't compel you to. So what this does is this essentially initiates the process with the county to come up with the numbers. And we have to finalize those numbers. We would bring that back to council, and you would have to approve, in fact, I think that's scheduled for the next regular session.
Anything to go to the ballot would have to be to the Board of Elections by August 6. So up to your second meeting in July, you have time to decide whether or not you actually want to proceed with putting it on the ballot in November. All this does is request certification from the county auditor. It's a required first step if you would decide, then down the road, that you want to proceed. We have to have this done.
So if you don't do this, you could not move forward. But doing it does not obligate you to move forward.
He's certifying based upon the audits of the parcels, the income that would be generated by this. And only if you can do that.
He's affirming the numbers, yes.
Yes.
Right.
Makes sense. Thank you very much.
So you could choose, in fact, you know, if council is resolute and wanting to pursue an additional funding, ask us all. You could at a later date, as long as we meet that August deadline, to have something prepared for the ballot. If you wanted to pursue an income tax, you could do that at a later date as well. So you have some options. But again, to keep this option on the table, you would have to initiate the process with the resolution this evening.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Does that answer your question? Any other questions for Mr. Mayorman? This time, I'll seek a motion for Resolution 2025-31 and seeking levy for street purposes. Would anyone like to make that motion?
I'll move.
Moved by the mayor. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Seres. There's no other discussion? Go ahead.
For those of you in the audience, this was the last major part of the infrastructure that we've been working on to get some long-term maintenance. And anybody who's a senior resident knows that we've got a lot of issues with rebuilding the streets. As Mr. Mayorman said, we spent about a million of public funds that have come from the public here locally, but we've also had a number of matching funds from the state. And Ryan, as a fair statement, we've spent about $1.8 million a year for the last 10, 15 years.
Yeah, it's in that neighborhood. We're not quite doubling our investment, but we're leveraging a good bit of what we're spending locally on grants.
Right. Those grants principally were for major thoroughfares, and we can't get those types of grants for neighborhood streets. And that's where a lot of the issue is now, is with the neighborhood streets. So we've got about 320 lane miles of roads in the city in a lane miles 10 feet wide by a mile long. And so a city street is two lane miles. You get out on Main Street, it may be four, five wide. Roughly about 200 of those lane miles require some major rebuilding, not just maintenance, but rebuilding going down to the base there. And that's very expensive. The problem we've had is even though we've been spending $1.8 million a year, we're still falling behind because we needed about another $2 to $2.5 million just to recover ourselves. So the council's looked at a plan that over the next 15 years, hopefully, we can, if these funds are made available through this means or another means, we'd be able to accomplish the rebuilding of those 200 lane miles and also maintain the 120 that are in a state that could be maintained at that point without a lot of other major investment. It'd take us about this long, but in about 15 years, then we could be in a regular maintenance mode for all of our streets. And that's just where we're at right now. Prior to about 2010, the city was averaging someplace on the order of about $50,000 a year in maintenance and had deferred a lot of maintenance on the streets for decades. And so we're reaping that at this point. And so the problem is if we don't do some major rework and investment, every year we defer this, more and more streets get into a state of leaving just general maintenance and going into a place now where they have to be rebuilt. And that will be anywhere from three to 10 times the cost of maintaining a street, where we could take an inch or two of the asphalt off and put that on, say, the base versus tearing the base out. And so that's just the hard truth. And, but we own these streets, nobody else does. Nobody else is going to help us with it besides us. And so we haven't made a final decision whether we're going to put that on the ballot. There really is no other means of doing this. About 80% of all of our income that we have goes to personnel in fire, police, courts, call center, those types of things. So you can't, you know, if you say, we'll go cut some money from someplace else, well, it's public safety. Literally, is where you'd have to cut to make up these kind of dollars. And up to this point, we've made the decision[1569.34] And up to this point, we've made the decision that with the money we have, we need to maintain public safety first and not to disparage public safety. What that meant is that we have to maintain the streets. So we believe both of those things have to happen, and we're looking at a lot, some of the discussion you've heard is that the State House has been looking to put a number of constraints on local communities and what they can and can't do, even to ask you to put these kind of things on the ballots or the percentage of votes we need or whether we're even allowed to collect property taxes. A lot of these things are up in the air right now at the State House. So we're waiting this next month, like Mr. Mayor has said, to try and figure out what's going on at the State House and what they're going to impose on us here at a local level and what we will or will not even be allowed to ask you at a ballot measure in November. So more to come on that.
Can I add something to your point? I just want to say to this, to all that we've brought about and we've talked about in terms of streets, I know that this community elected us to be wise and to make proper decisions and tough decisions. And what I sense in this is these streets need future present considerations because to put this off on another council after we're gone or to put this off onto another city management group after you guys are retired is a disservice. I think now's the time to do something about this at the public's choice as well. And so we're sharing this responsibility from a public side. Not with this, we're not mandating this, we're not forcing this on anyone, but everyone here knows how bad our streets are. I drive these streets daily, and I bring clients to this community to ask me what's going on with our roads. And you know, it's a pretty, it's a half a lengthy conversation, but nevertheless, we all know what we're up against, but we are at a time, in a pivotal time, where we can actually do something positive for the next council. And this burden of mess isn't on them. And I think this is going to be a tough decision that says, okay, I know it's not popular, but it's the right thing to do. And that's the way I feel about this. I just want to say to all those that would be speaking about all the great ideas that we could be doing off, you know, outside of what we should be doing and how bad this got from whatever was going on in the past, we are now currently able to do something about this. And I think based on who we have here on council, I think we all agree that we can make a strong impact for the future, for your children's children. This city is going to be here after I'm well and gone, and I just love the opportunity of making an impact for such a time as this. So, yeah.
Anyone else? Hear the comment? All right, see, now we'll go ahead and get a roll call, please.
Mayor Urschel?
Aye.
Councilman Crawford?
Aye.
Councilman Probst?
Aye.
Councilman Walker?
Aye.
Councilwoman Seris?
Aye.
President Smith?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Our next item under new business is Resolution 2025-32. This is authorizing City Manager to prepare and submit an application for the Ohio Public Works Commission, state capital improvement, and local transportation improvement programs, and to execute those contracts as required for program year 2026. This is for the West Main Street improvement at Progress Drive to Orange Street. At this time, I'll go ahead and turn the floor over to Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. The Ohio Public Works Commission recently provided notice that it is accepting round 40 applications for state capital improvement or what we know as Issue II and/or local transportation improvement funds for rehabilitation of local infrastructure. And as indicated, this would be for program year 2026. Following quite a bit of internal deliberation, our engineering staff is recommending submitting a West Main Street improvements project for funding. This would involve street restoration from Progress Drive to Orange Street. The project's estimated cost is $1,294,990. We're proposing a 69% state and 31% city match arrangement, and so the local share would be $446.90 based on the current estimate. Please be reminded that the city is in line to receive what we call STP or Surface Transportation Program funds from the Miami Valley Regional Planning Commission to rehabilitate West Main Street from Orange Street to Church Street. That's slated to occur in 2028. So if awarded with this Issue II funding that we're presenting this evening, the project would be a nice complement, and we'd have the entire roadway adjacent to essentially the market district all the way out to Progress that would be fairly nearly restored. So staff is recommending approval of the resolution as presented to authorize the application, and if so authorized, we'll let you know how we score here in a few months and whether or not this is an option.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Any questions for Brent? Any questions over here? No? All right, not seeing any questions, we'll go ahead and accept a motion to prepare the application. So moved by Councilman Probst, seconded by Councilman Walker. Thank you. There's no further discussion. We'll go ahead and get a roll call on this, please.
Mayor Urschel?
Aye.
Councilman Crawford?
Aye.
Councilman Probst?
Aye.
Councilman Walker?
Aye.
Councilwoman Seris?
Aye.
President Smith?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you very much. Our next item is Resolution 2025-33. This is opposing House Bill 335 urging the Ohio General Assembly to reject legislation that eliminates inside millage, transfers local budgetary authority to the county budget commissions and/or appointed officials. Mr. Mayor, do you have a comment on this?
Yes. So due to the lateness of our committee meeting right before this, we weren't able to chat with you all, but as I suggested in some prior commentary this evening, most of this bill has been incorporated into the budget bill, and for that purpose, we're recommending that council not move forward with us this evening. In lieu of that, we would offer up the suggestion that council may entertain a procedural motion directing that a letter be sent to the governor's office urging the governor to line item veto some of the provisions that were in Bill, House Bill 335, that he exercise that line item veto authority. So if you'd like to entertain that, you can direct us to do that. But again, given that the bill as it was presented is not likely to be forward because it's transitioned into the budget bill, this is really somewhat unnecessary this evening.
Thank you. All right. I think we need to do that.
Can I go ahead and speak?
Yeah.
Yeah, so I'm giving back what Brent has talked about. So were they voting on that today?
They, the General Assembly has passed a unified version. It's been through the conference of many of the houses.
Okay, so the House Bill 96.
So it's.
Has been passed by then and is going to the governor.
Yes, it is with the governor for review right now.
Okay, yeah.
A couple of the other provisions that were in HB 335 that our understanding is that it may, to the budget bill, include expanding the authorities of the county budget commission to be able to unilaterally amend levy amounts, which again.
Voted.
Yes.
Voted levy amount.
These are individuals who are voted into office, but not voted into the office for the purpose of the budget commission. So under the current standing, you know, the three countywide appointed or elected officials on the budget commission would have the ability to evaluate tax budget submittals and unilaterally reduce the amount that is levied again to that point, even if it's that as a vote percentage. So that's one provision. There are many others. Another one that I think is concerning is that this would eliminate the replacement levy as an option for councils or for boards of education, et cetera. So you would be relegated to a simple renewal or an entirely new. You couldn't do the replacement function. So again, these are two of the more extreme of a number of things that are adverse to how we operate here locally, affecting not just the city, but counties, school districts, townships, you know, other local government entities. So again, we'd be happy to follow through on that if, you know, if you want us to encourage this with the governor. But again, I would just stay tuned because I don't think the General Assembly is done with property tax. We've dodged a bullet with the inside millage right now, but everything we're hearing is that they feel compelled to do something. Councilman Reynolds did report to me that a press release was issued late this afternoon from the initiative group that's seeking the ballot measure to constitutionally eliminate property tax. They apparently, according to Councilman Reynolds, are deferring that and looking at a spring of May 2026 ballot measure. So my guess is they don't think they're going to quite get the signatures they need to be on in November, but that's still on the horizon. So I think the mindset of the General Assembly, the Republican Party, is let's get out in front of that, make some substantive changes to property tax. Again, I think the concern that we have is if the state wants to look at comprehensively reordering these revenue functions, that's okay because Ohio's system is very complicated. But in so doing, they also need to make sure that they're providing convenient, realistic means of backfilling that revenue in a time period to allow that transition. Implementing some of these changes now and suggesting that we would have to have a means of backfilling revenue for 2026 is not realistic. So again, it's understandable if they want to make some adjustments and update the property tax system, but it's got to be in a manner that doesn't force local governments, including ours and schools and so forth, to have to look at major cuts.
Brent, you think we probably have to have that out by tomorrow, right? Signed up?
Yeah, yeah. They'd have to go out immediately, yeah.
Well, I'm just going to talk to the rest of the council. I think we need to do this. All of these items are, once again, it's that I understand that the state has gotten that people are concerned about their property taxes. They've had about 12 initiatives that have installed in committees for the last three years. They haven't moved forward, and now because of this constitutional amendment, they're scrambling to put a package together, but a lot of it, they're not consulting with anyone, they're not talking to any of us local municipalities. They're removing our ability to work at the local level and talk to our communities and collect income for our local jobs that we need to do, take care of the local municipalities, and trying to package that really to offset this constitutional amendment. But there's a lot of damage there in that as they do these things, once again, they keep constraining our local ability. And this is, I mean, people aren't stupid, they know what they're voting for, and we need to inform folks about what's going on. And to put these kind of constraints on us makes it harder and harder for us to actually take care of the business that we need to do. And just like you said, Brent, you know, we're attempting to put together a plan to take care of our roads, and we're getting potentially limited in a lot of respects, even how we could even present that to the population here in the city at that point. So I think we need to do that. Who's signature would you recommend that be on your, then?
Probably the council president, and we could draft something if, Mr. President, if you're available, just to get a signature tomorrow.
Right. How do you focus on council? Do you feel comfortable with that?
Yeah, definitely.
I feel comfortable as long as we include in the statement that there is, you know, and I need to hear some of your thoughts on this, too. There's a, I'm sure there's an auditor reassessment for all of our values, again, coming in 2026. And we're all bracing because we know what's coming to some degree. I've talked, anyway.
Yeah, you and I have talked, and you know, the early estimates are it might be another 25, 30% valuation increase coming with the next, yeah.
Absolutely, that's what I'm hearing. Another 30%. And we already heard what this last 30% did.
Right.
If you think that was a problem.
Right, right.
Wait till you see this next one.
Right.
So just for folks in the audience to realize, for your property taxes, about 6% of your property taxes goes to the city, about 73% go to education, and the remainder goes to various county activities. That value reassessment that happened principally, and the increase in your taxes, I'm not disparaging the schools, but that principally went to the schools because a good chunk of the property taxes associated with schools go with the actual value of the property. So if the property goes, value goes up, the taxes collected goes up. Majority of the other taxes that are collected in the county are fixed value property tax. So if the value goes up, the rate goes down, and so it's a fixed value. So even if the property value gets assessed higher, you don't, there isn't additional money collected. It's the same money collected every year. The two major exceptions are about 40% of the property taxes which the school has that goes with actual value of that. And then there's this thing, we had a little bit of discussion called inside millage, which is 10 mils or basically 10% of that, about 20% of the property tax that's collected, of which the school gets a majority share of that as well, too. And that goes with the actual value there. But you're right, if there's another assessment in the future, your taxes will go up. Right now, there's no voted millage for the city, so we wouldn't see any of that, but the majority of that would be going to schools. And I'm not disparaging the schools in that part, but a lot of times people say, hey, our taxes went up, so why aren't you paving our roads? And what I would say is, well, you paid your property tax, you didn't pay to the city. You principally paid it to education and county functions. And that's just, those are things that were voted on by the population, and they approved, but they don't come to us. So as we're paying more, part of the reason we want to have some more discussions with our representatives at the state level is if there's a hurt there, then we need to discuss where those funds are really going versus to the municipalities. And one of the major things they were looking at doing was cutting that 6% that we were even getting in the city, they were going to zero that out. So we wouldn't get any property taxes at all. And they weren't going to do the same thing for the other folks that were collecting that in some regards. And so we were really concerned that there was a, as they're failing to, and I'll use that word failing because it's all happening in real time, as they're failing to try and address something, they're not really discussing with the folks that the impacts are occurring on, at least giving us an opportunity to give them some feedback, so.
I really tried to educate myself on this today. Why, why did, and I've never used AI before, and I do for the first time today, why do property taxes in Ohio go up the way they have? Why is this happening? Of course, we know the housing market's tight, so properties are selling for more than they're actually probably worth. When the auditor assesses your value, he's basing it on sales in your neighborhood.
Right, right.
So if the homes in your neighborhood sold for two, three times what they're worth, that's going to go up. In 1979, the General Assembly passed a bill that put a tax reduction factor in.
Right.
So when that happens, when inflation causes your property values to go up, that tax reduction factor is supposed to kick in.
Right.
So even with a 30% increase, you should only see maybe a 5% increase in your bill. However, the state has set up this funding formula for schools called the 20-mil floor. And anyone that doesn't understand that, I encourage you, just get on Google and type in, explain the Ohio 20-mil floor to me.
Right.
There's a provision in that wants a school hit that 20 mils, inside and outside. They can't collect any less.
Right.
So if you live in a school district that has hit that 20 mils, that tax reduction factor did not kick in for you.
Right.
So you see an increase in your tax bill of 25% or 30%. What it showed, there's websites that have it, and you can look it up, Xenia Schools has hit that 20 mil. Their effective rate is actually 31.35% mils. That's their effective rate. So those schools, and there are very, very few school districts, there are maybe three in Ohio that haven't hit that 20-mil limitation.
Right.
If you haven't hit it, then the tax reduction factor kicks in. If your school district has hit it, you don't get that tax reduction.
Right.
So why doesn't the state fix that?
Right.
Because that's what's causing the problem.
Right.
It's not the six, seven cents per dollar that cities are getting.
Right, right. And so we're, just for the population to understand, we're struggling here in that if the state says, oh, by the way, the 6% you're still getting, you don't get, then we lose roughly $2.1 million.
1.8 is what?
1.8. But once again, that's 1.8 million less than we have today, which means, okay, do we take that out of public safety, public service? Do we take that out of paving the roads? How much are we using to pave the roads? Well, we're only spending a million of our dollars, so even if we dropped paving the roads, period, we'd still have another $800,000 we'd have to give. So we're not even struggling with trying to understand how we collect some additional dollars with the road pay, we're just trying to understand at the end of this, how would we even provide the services we're providing today? And all of this is happening without any engagement with the local governments.
That's it.
Zero right now is our biggest concern. And once again, I'm not disparaging our local representatives, but we haven't had any meetings with our local representatives on this, even though they're voting on this, they haven't come and asked to meet with the council of Beaver Creek or Fairborn or Xenia or Belbrook or Cedarville or Jamestown. And a lot of this is happening in real time without any discussion with any of us and even trying to understand the impacts. And I would also say without meeting with the school boards of the Xenia Community School District or meeting with the Belbrook School District or the Yellow Springs School District or the Jamestown School District, all of those, right? So.
And I really appreciate what Danette Basic brought up and Will has brought up. Just to add one more piece to this complexity, I spoke with a local auditor who said his hands are tied because he has a metrics that has, what was that year, Danette, that you brought up, that year that you brought up?
79.
79.
That metric is locked in place and he can't change it. And I challenged him, and I says, your view is not current, even from the market standpoint. If your metric is based on the market, this market is viewed as a vulture's market. If you're living in New York or California or any of those Western states, this market is a goldmine. And it artificially drives up the perception of what the value is. And we're getting houses selling over ass price, you're getting investments sold over ass price, you're getting people that are picking up properties that aren't already inhabitable and in bulk form that would be unheard of for what people would pay locally. And I challenged the auditor on that, and he told me his hands are tied. He says, right, because the state of Ohio, we in this market would not pay for some of that stuff, but it's nevertheless, it's the sales that are driving the metric. And so if we see a third or 30% increase, it's because it's a national effect, it is not just Ohio. And I'm saddened because I don't know where our reach is at for city officials and for council, but somebody, something needs to be done at the auditor's level to bring them up to speed as to what the reality of is and to change that metric. Because that metric is not fair. You cannot just drive, there is arms length, or I should say, there's transactions that are going on that are not hitting, well, they're hitting the public, but there's still sales that are going on that are hidden, in my opinion, that are not disclosed, they're non-disclosed sales, and we can't see the sales price. But I'm not going to bicker about that, but I will say that something has to be done with the metric at the auditor's level by the way they're assessing values, because these values are going to continue to either stabilize or they're going to continue to increase. And I, and the thing that's driving it is just this market, our area market is viewed as safe and cheap for those that are out of California, New York. I mean, and I've got plenty of stories to tell you how that occurs. I know it from my experience. So, yeah. So what is it we can do as a council? I think in the letter that we send, I think there'd be something to be said, that something has to be recalculated in the way the auditors look at sales. It has to change, so.
All right, thank you.
So do we concur to have Brent put the letter together for signature by the president?
We'll collaborate, the three of us, and council's prepared tomorrow.
All right, thank you.
Want to take a motion on that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I would like to make that motion.
I'll make that motion.
By the mayor and seconded by?
I will.
Councilman Seris.
Yes.
All right, and we'll get a roll call, please.
Mayor Urschel?
Aye.
Councilman Crawford?
Aye.
Councilman Probst?
Aye.
Councilman Walker?
Aye.
Councilwoman Seris?
Aye.
President Smith?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you very much. Next on the agenda is appointed officials reports.
Next on the agenda is the Plenary of Officials' Reports. We'll go ahead and start with our Finance Director, Mr. Duke.
Thank you, sir. I have nothing for the council this evening.
All right, thank you. Any questions for Mr. Duke? All right, you're off the hot seat. Thank you. I appreciate that. All right, next is our Law Director, Adam Law Director. What was your?
I have nothing for you this evening, unless anyone has anything for me.
All right. Questions for Adam Law Director?
Danette, when we got together our last meeting, one of the items that is in the bill is a definition by the state legislature now on?
That was included in the budget bill, yes.
Right, and I'm assuming that's in the combined House Bill Ninety-Six now, which will be going to the governor's office.
Unless the governor vetoes that, that will stand.
Right. So we discussed before about making a request to the, and I didn't know, I can't remember the name of the state building organization that oversees the state building code and occupancy about?
That's under the Department of Commerce.
Right. So can we prepare a letter and request them, request from them whether they will be using this as a compliance measure for the state building code and occupancy?
Yeah, I can ask.
Okay, that'd be great.
All right, any other questions for Mr. Smith? If not, we'll move on to our City Manager, Mr. Merriman.
Oh, you know I've got updates. So first, I want to give a shout out and acknowledgement to our Public Service Maintenance staff. They've completed all of the utility infrastructure reconstruction on Sheilin Road.
Yeah.
So that is slated for resurfacing, and I know the folks out that way are much anticipating that project coming to a completion. So again, just to Ray Farrell and his staff, appreciate the work that they did, they did excellent work. Second, we have completed the Shawnee Park Playground Equipment. That is open to the public now, so again, thanks to Brian Fortner for coordinating that project, Public Service Staff as well, so that is open to our public, and kids are enjoying it. In fact, I drove by at eight o'clock this morning, and I saw a young couple, probably in their twenties, early twenties, on the zip line, and I thought that's perfect.
Really?
Yeah. I did provide for council, just following up from our conversation last Friday, I did provide notice to Mr. Huddleston for clarification about our desire to advance or continue the discussion on dispatch. I provided a copy of that correspondence, just so you could see what I ended up sending. Also provided to you this evening, a calendar of events for July. You'll notice that this is formatted a little bit differently. The reason?
This is really helpful.
I like this.
We had hoped to do it more calendar form, the problem is short of buying software that's programmed to do that, to try to do this in Word or Excel as a calendar, it's just got too cumbersome. So we felt like this is still helpful and identifying my dates.
Yep.
So we'll continue to provide that on a monthly basis. Let's see here.
And I like that we got some of those other major community items, like the music in the park and those kind of things, it'd be good for us to go to.
Right, advanced out of the fairgrounds, and again, as we know about employee recognitions or swearing ins or things, when we can make it on there, have enough advance notice, we'll continue to do that, too. Finally, just a brief update, the Finance Director and I had the opportunity the other day to have an audience with our development partners, Dillon LLC, Dillon Development LLC, breaking down pro forma for transactional steps. And so this is even since our meeting last Friday. I think we were both pretty pleased with how that's shaking out. I think it's fair to say to you publicly, we're looking at that Phase One takedown, that first transactional step occurring within the next quarter, so within the next three months, perhaps even in the next six to eight weeks. So we're very, very close for that first transactional phase, and that's an important milestone, because that'll open the gateway then for that private investment and that private construction to begin. So I just want to report to you, we're very close on that. We will, of course, bring that detail back to you and kind of lay out what the financial model looks like, what that impact is then on our overall finances associated with the site. But again, we feel very, very good about where that's at, as I suggested on Friday, and a couple of you didn't, weren't able to attend, so just that you're aware as well. But we are on schedule from a construction standpoint. We were hopeful that we would have asphalt down, beginning to go down no later than Wednesday of next week. Between weather and an issue we've discovered with a sewer line that was slip lined, that some of the casing was missing, that's probably going to get pushed back another week. But again, we should see asphalt going down on what will be the Market Street Extended and Galloway to the north of Market Street sometime in the next two to three weeks. So we'll have accessibility back to those businesses along that. It won't be the final coat of asphalt, but it'll be a working coat that the public will have access to. And then we'll start to see work occurring on the King Street Entryway. That corridor demolition will begin early in July, early to mid-July. We will maintain access from King Street, and we'll work on one side and then the other. But again, folks will start to see some visibility at that phase of the project, too. So with that, I can answer any questions? Oh, yes, we do, the city will be closed for the holiday on July 4th, which falls on Friday this year. Our fireworks festival and downtown red, white, blue block party will occur the same date, so it'll actually occur on the holiday this year. Some of us, the buildings will be closed, some of us will be working most of that day. But again, we want to remind the public that we'll be closed, and come on out to those events. We're looking very much forward to a fantastic celebration. So happy to answer any questions. If not, that's all I have.
Thanks, Governor. No further questions.
Yeah, in Shawnee Park, is there some type of leak?
It is not a leak, it is a drainage issue, because you've got, there's, so recognize that, the reason you have the pond at Shawnee Park, it's a natural lowland.
Yeah.
Yeah, so with the hill and the topography immediately adjacent, you have just a bit of a low spot there, and it naturally collects. We've been discussing for a number of years the need to put some type of drainage, and I just had this conversation actually with the Assistant City Manager just a couple of days ago. We need to probably install tile, which is going to have to drain into the drink there, which means we'll probably have to take out a segment of the sidewalk or the walkway. I'd love to see if we can have something in place before the event, because every year we seem to have rain about that time, and that's a mess right down there. So it's another project that we currently don't have in the queue, but it very much needs to be addressed.
Yeah, and I walked down there the other day with my granddaughter, and mosquitoes were just horrendous around there.
You have a lot of sitting water right there.
At least, will that be taken care of for that?
I can't guarantee it, but we're.
Well, not the water being gone, but maybe some mosquito control?
Yeah, we can have some conversation certainly with County Health, see what we can do. We can't guarantee we can eradicate mosquitoes, we can try to tree down there, yeah.
All right, thank you very much. And then with the construction at the Market District, do we have a preferred place of parking for the Fourth of July Festival? Are we?
Great question, Mr. Smith. We have some language, we'll be putting out some to the public. In fact, I just reviewed a draft of it earlier today. We will have parking available at the Market District, but only in the former Ramada Lot. And then folks will be directed to use the pedestrian walkway, the sidewalk along Main Street or along Church Street. We want to really emphasize, and we absolutely do not want pedestrians walking through any portion of that construction, so that's just a liability nightmare. But we do have several dozen spaces in that former lot that will be accessible, so we'll be putting out some instructions to the general public here in the next couple of days to that effect. Additionally, we talked with the county there, because they'll be closed that day, they're making all of their lots downtown here, at least the ones not associated with the Sheriff's Office, making those available to the general public. So we'll put out a map and information on where to park. But again, there will be fewer spaces, because we won't have that entire Market District area, so folks should plan accordingly. Lots of spaces on side streets that folks can take advantage of, so we encourage that. But again, all of our marked lots will be available.
So our lot next to the Masons over there?
Yes.
Will be open as well?
Yes, and that's where we encourage handicap parking, we'll have extra handicap parking spaces, and it's pretty accessible down the roadway, because the roadway will be closed off, folks will be able to use the road, not just relegated to the sidewalk down Collier there. But yeah, that's where we'd instruct folks who are handicapped, that lot will be open. All of our lots downtown will be open as well. And again, a lot of the side streets there, there's quite a bit of parking accessibility also.
So not that we're looking forward to these kind of problems, I know a couple of years ago, and I get the context that once the mortars are loaded, they need to be fired, right? But if we are going to consider any kind of delay or something due to weather, is there a preferred place where folks can go to get that information?
Yeah, both the city, yeah.
That we'll be posting in real time?
In real time, we will do that on Rotary's website, we'll do it on the city's website, we'll do it on the city's Facebook page.
Okay.
And we should have media partners down, the local radio stations, obviously typically broadcasting, and we'll utilize that as well.
Okay.
So encourage folks, as soon as we have an understanding, you know, whether or not we need to postpone, and if we do, it'll be the following day, it'll be on Saturday. We typically, you know, as you suggested, Mayor, that once those things are loaded, they can't be disassembled, shipped back, like they have to be used on site. So it may be later in the evening, if we have a passing shower. We will shoot them off in rain, as we had to do a couple of years ago. It's really more the wind is the bigger, wind and lightning are the two big threats. But yeah, hopefully, the crappy weather we've had of late will give us a reprieve here.
Right now, they're not calling for any rain, that's right.
Maybe a thousand degrees, but we'll see.
That's good, that's good. I'm glad they're going to be on our sites, not that people don't normally go to the Rotary site, but I get their sponsoring, and being Rotarian, I get that, but most folks, I don't even know, would know that there is a Rotary site, but at least they'll know that on our Facebook page and our website there.
Absolutely, that's where they should go to find out.
Right.
All right, thank you.
Sure.
Very much. And any questions for Mr. Merriman? Thank you for all that information, and you know, and it is important, we do ask people not only to live and work, but to play in Xenia, and I certainly also want to thank our Public Service Department for the improvements at Shawnee Park. That is just a wonderful entity. It is our pride and joy of our community, of our parks, so thank you so much for getting that accomplished, and in time for the festival.
And one of the comments, so just, so folks understand, the fireworks are privately funded, which is amazing, the Sunny Cab Foundation and family, and the Xenia Rotary that participates in that with the raffle ticket sales and a bunch of other items with that as well. And obviously, this is something we're encouraging as a community, but the majority of the funding of what's going on that day is a privately funded event that we're encouraging participation from the city.
And I would even add, you know, a number of the churches, local businesses, the sand art is sponsored, you know, these are, there are some city resources, certainly that go into the decorations and cost of personnel for safety and for public service. But the events downtown, by and large, are sponsored or donated, a lot of volunteer time that goes into it. Rotary and what they do down at the park, all donated. So this is a really unique community event, so many different people and institutions step in and fill that void and provide a fantastic local event.
So some folks are wondering, why aren't you paving my road instead of shooting off fireworks? Realize it's not our money to shoot the fireworks.
Right.
All right, thank you very much. We're going to move on to council comments and reports. This time, we'll go ahead and go to Councilman Probst. We'll start right here.
Thank you, Mr. President. We did have the Public Safety Committee meeting this evening. You know, fire, police, and dispatch all talked about some future staffing needs. Fire, we discussed, you know, Station Thirty-One, some of the possible additions that we're remodeling to that, and the possible station locations for future planning of any additional stations or moving of Station Thirty-Two. We discussed fire inspection and some of the community risk reduction programs, and how we can improve some of those. And we talked with the fire about applying for a safer grant for some increased staffing to make sure that our ladder Thirty-One is always in service as well, so that is something that they're working on. Police Division, that's the police, we really don't want to talk about this. Hey, chief. Obviously, they're hugely important, and we discussed their body cams and how we may need to switch vendors on that, since we're losing some capabilities from those. And with the increase in Market District, possible realigning and adding a fifth district to, thank you, Councilman McRaece, to make sure we have proper police coverage down there, once we get increased businesses, increased traffic, increased people down there as well. And dispatch, well, it's the same things we've been discussing with, for the last several days, and looking forward, replacing some of the dispatch equipment as well here in the next few years, so. Miss Annie?
I'm ready.
That's all I have.
All right, thank you. Any questions for Councilman Probst? All right, you're off the hook. Councilman Walker?
I have anything to add, thank you.
Thank you. Councilman McRaece, what do you have?
Yeah, I have a few things. I just want to say on the fourteenth, I got to attend the fishing tournament, which was just fantastic. It was so fun. I worked with, I worked with Councilman Crawford. We had an enthusiastic kid in our area that we were measuring fish with, and every, James had to leave early to attend something, so I took over. So I'm a lot shorter than James, and so this little boy was closer to my height, but every time he caught a fish, he would hold the pole up, and the fish would slap against the side of my head. And of course, he won a trophy for catching twenty-seven, and I should have got one for catching twenty-seven as well. So that was a lot of fun. It was a great turnout, and it was just done, it's just organized so well, it's just great. And then that evening, I got to go to the two-hundred-fiftieth birthday of the U.S. Army and the Tenth Annual Flag Day Ceremony. That was very well done, orchestrated, very moving, especially when they took all the flags that needed to be properly disposed of and burned. And it was, it was just magnificent, very well done. And on the seventeenth, we had the X-Pac meeting, and so Ryan was there, and that was done to talk to the person that's here that's representing whoever is going to be doing the actual art for us, the consultant. And so we came up, we had some great ideas, and we kind of all collaborated and talked about what we thought this piece should look like that will represent Xenia and coming through the tornado and a memorial to everybody, and the growth and the spirit camaraderie that we have. So that was very productive. And on the twenty-fifth, I was lucky enough to get to go to the promotion for Sergeant Matt Miller to Major and Officer Ryan Lanell to Sergeant, so that was very well done. And we are so lucky here in this city, we are so blessed, we have a fabulous fire department, our police officer department, excellent, and the city, I mean, they just work so well together and are so forward-thinking, and looking at our growth and our needs and what's going on currently with our population, and they seem to have just a great idea of what's going on in our community, and just everything that citizens are facing, and I just love the forward-thinking and planning that's going in. So I greatly appreciate everybody and the job they're doing.
Very nice, very nice.
Yeah, and we saw that tonight in the discussions that we're having, so.
Absolutely.
Yeah, so appreciate it.
Absolutely. All right. Thank you, Councilman McRaece. Anything, do you have anything else for a please? All right, we'll go to Councilman Crawford.
Yeah, I did attend the Public Safety Committee meeting. I actually enjoyed this meeting. I got a chance to see some, you know, my appreciation for what's going on in terms of the leadership, the council, and your representation, and the care for this community, and for those, Mr. Merriman, Mr. Henry, Chief Stutes, Chief Brogman, Brogman, just their leadership style and looking ahead. I want to say, you know, it's one thing to react to a problem today, it's another thing to see and forecast where you need to be down the road. And I, and my confidence for their leadership and for their vision for going forward and what they need in their various departments is pretty awesome. I'm impressed with this group. I count it a pleasure to serve with you. Just thank you for allowing me to be in that Public Safety Committee today. The other thing I wanted to say, just thank you to the city for their covering of potholes. I was counting the potholes that were not being addressed, and they got addressed this week. And so I don't have to bring any numbers in today, but I'll say there's been work, and I know that in our last meeting, and I know that, you know, they have to do mowing, and so between the mowing and the filling of potholes, I think it's a great service of what's going on in our community. We're trying to hold these roads together. They are a mess, it's bumpy, but at least you're not losing, you're not flattening tires and, you know, you can spare yourself of some of the alignments that possibly could be coming in about. Our BZA was scheduled this week, but it was canceled because nobody had any issues. So again, that's, but that's not always, but we do have a few cancellations. So anyway, I chaired that committee, and that was canceled because there was no request, no requested items. The fishing derby, I had a blast at the fishing derby. Listen, Walmart donated, no, let me think about this, Walmart donated the fishing Walmart donated the, the fishing poles for any kid that wanted to fish.
That didn't happen.
And the bait was supplied by, I believe, the police department or anyways funded through the police department, I think through donations, I could be wrong. But anyway, the bait was free and these kids were just, you know, they were having fun. And I, I will tell you, for Faith and I working together on one kid who was, who caught, you said 28?
27.
27 fish. I knew, I knew he was going to win an award, but every, every time he held the fish up, he would say, he was, he was about six years old. He would say, beautiful. Every fish he got, he would say, beautiful. And I know the biggest fish he got was eight inches. And anyway, I was thrilled and I just think that the adults who were there to watch this, this process and what was offered to the children, it was very encouraging. So, it was a great, it was a great thing to do and a great thing to be a participant of and I just had, actually had a blast at it.
Yeah, you didn't get hit in the head with the fish.
I did not get hit. But anyway, so with that being said, I want to thank you Faith for covering me. I had to leave, you know, I, you know, like 10 minutes before the end of it, but I-
Oh, actually, they extended it because the rain stopped. We got to fish like 40, 40 minutes longer, which was good.
Yeah, that was great.
They were all so happy for that, yeah.
That's great. And with that, I have nothing else.
All right, thank you, Councilman Sries. All right.
Did you want to introduce Hiba?
Um, we're going to do that here.
Okay.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
So, I'm going to let the mayor finish up and then he has an announcement. But, you know, we, I don't normally like to do a commercial for council, but I, I do want to put a shout out to the local business here in Xenia. Xenia Tool and Rental, phenomenal. Had to borrow a piece of equipment from them and, you know, not only did they show you how to use it right, but, you know, they're just, they're just very modest on their pricing for rentals and I, I know that they, a lot of their stuff gets borrowed and abused and brought back to them, but just a great group of guys there. It's really a nice amenity to have them in our community when you need an item that you just don't want to fork out a lot of money for. So, anyway, but no, I'd also, also like to thank our colleagues here. We had special council meeting last week on, last Friday, June 20th, from about 1:00 to 3:30, almost four o'clock, yeah, a pretty long meeting. And I'd like to thank city staff also for being there and, and helping us with that as, as we have some tough decisions to make regarding dispatch and, you know, all these things we're doing, folks, is, is to really just help with funding the Xenia taxpayers over the years. We, we have just been paying for a lot of things that other members in our county, in our county have taken for granted, that we have paid for. And, you know, and we just have to watch every dollar. We, we just aren't a big enough city, we can't absorb that, even though that we're the county seat. We're asking our other jurisdictions to, it's time for them to pay their fair share. So, I thanks for the city staff for working with us on that. And really just, just would like to reach out and, and ask everybody to, you know, spread the word, our best festival of the year is coming up next Friday, Fourth of July. I love that festival anyway, the fireworks are great. I encourage people to come downtown between 4:00 and 8:00 for the block party and then stick around for the fireworks. And of course, we, we do want people to, to be smart too and not be stupid and light your own fireworks off at the festival. And I know there, what is, Chief, you're here, what, can you reiterate what our city policy is on fireworks before and after? How, how much citizens are allowed to set off? The timeframe, do we, do we know that? Our law director, do you know that?
I don't.
It's the weekend before the holiday, the weekend of the holiday and the weekend after the holiday, yeah.
So, it's about two weeks, really?
Yep.
Two weeks.
Now, again, there are a lot of shoot them off. If, if, if they're shooting off repeatedly at 2:00 in the morning, absolutely call dispatch, they'll send a cure up, they'll address it. You know, it's, when it becomes a nuisance. Obviously, if it's in the evening, people do have the legal right to do it.
Right, okay.
Yeah, just to consider it.
Yeah. Chief, mention about-
I think we still have it on our website, if you get on the city's website. We have a breakdown of what's allowed and not.
But commercial fireworks are not allowed by private individuals.
Correct, it has to be local retail.
Yeah, it can be commercial.
And if we hear gunshots, we can call that in?
Yes, as soon as practical.
All right, but that's basically all I have. And I'll go ahead and transfer it over to the mayor.
We had a planning zoning commission meeting this month, not necessarily look at over any new proposals there, but Brian Forstner got together with the commission to go over the next plan and really look at the status of each of the, of the actions. And so, just for folks in the public, the next plan is really our planning document for the next 10 years for the city and has five major key areas of renewal and renovation looking into the, the future and about 100 action items that were identified in there. And I was very pleasantly surprised, about 22% of those things have been accomplished already, which is just amazing and that we've just approved that last year. So, there's been a lot of work and, and I think the, the, the great thing is that this, this document isn't just something that's been, we approve and we set on the shelf and we renew it in 10 years and don't really follow it. And so, Brent, I'd like to make, make a recommendation, we could have a special presentation by Brian to come back to the council and let the rest of the council know that.
Yeah, I think that's our intent. We talked about taking the planning and zoning first.
Yes.
Do you remember when we were projecting?
I think, I want to say it was late July, but we wanted to make sure we had the lesson for that.
Absolutely. I, I, everyone was so pleased with that and he did such a great job of kind of helping us track through that. And I think a lot of times, when you're in the middle of the fight, you don't realize all the good things that are happening. And it's, it's great to stop and look back and say, hey, this is these, this was the dreaming that was going on, right? And, and there are good chunks of the dream are happening on a regular basis. So, kudos to Brent, to the whole team on that and, and I'm glad that Brian's doing the tracking against that as well, too.
Just forewarned, Brian's thorough, so it'll be, it'll be a long night there.
Right.
Yeah.
But it's good, it's good for us to know about this, right? And to be aware of that too. As I mentioned before, we had a Juneteenth celebration here at Lexington Park and there's about 150 folks came. This is all organized by one elderly lady out on Market Street, Teresa Henry. And she had a vision four years ago when this holiday got started, that we needed to celebrate it and do it well and honor God in that context as well, too. And I'm always shocked about how well this gets pulled off every year, but it was just, it was a great community fun time to come together. We had a number of the pastors out there as well, too, for that, did a balloon launch and folks came out from 5:00 to 9:00 and just hung out in the park. And there's lots of kids there and it was just a, just a really pleasant environment. So, kudos to her for, for putting that together. On the 22nd, we had a, a Unity Sunday Service with the Disciples of Christ Church there on 42 and they asked myself and Mayor Bayless to come speak at that. And once again, that was just a, a great time for folks from a number of different churches to be able to come, worship together and think about the good things that we have in common as children of God and not the things that divide us as well. I had an opportunity to go to the Green County Transit Board this last Wednesday as well. And Brian, I communicated a few things to you there. There's a lot of federal funding that comes into the Transit Board to operate the on-call service with Green Cats, as well as what they call the Flex Route, which is the circulars that we have in Xenia and Fairborn Beaver Creek and also the route that connects us with, with Dayton as well, too. So, the, my sense from them is they're very open for input, but they, they, they're trying to provide the best service they can, but sometimes they don't have a little bit more of the sense of the boots in the ground for the community there. So, more to come. One of the recommendations I made to them was that we can potentially help them with some signage for their stops. Due to the type of funding they get, they actually cannot fund, it's not a bus system, it's a time route system and they're not allowed to actually put signs up, but if we in our community would like to do that, we're, we're allowed to do that and they would work with us on that. So, that's, that's one item. And then there's some additional things I think we could do with that. But anyways, they're very open to discussions and so, more to come and we may have some more discussions at council about that as well, too. And then there's a, there's a new business opening downtown where the flower gift shop used to be and it's going to have its grand opening on the Fourth of July. And it's the young man who's been pures the work and getting this open, it's a, it's a pulled rug craft shop and these aren't the, what you may remember from the 60s where you got these rug kits and you, and you do these things and put them on the floor. These are actually works of art and the, his, his, his vision is that you be able to come in with your kids and your grandkids or your spouse, your friends and create really some works of art that you would hang on the wall. And if, if you walk by the store windows, now he's got some of those out there with that, but anyways, and he's looking that this would be a community meeting place, a gathering place where we come and, and hang out, do some projects. He's going to have space for folks to do other crafts as well, too. So, once again, just a great addition, I think, in our community. I know we, we had done a little bit of announcing for the, the loft apartments for the grand opening and stuff. Can we do something like this or encourage this as well for his grand opening?
Sure, yeah.
Yeah, that'd be great. That's good. That's, that's all I had. One, one other item, we've got a young lady who's a Xenia resident, Hiba, that is working for the city council on this initiative of whether we may or may not be putting something on the ballot this fall. And so, I'd like to make a recommendation, we have a, a short work session. Hiba's got some things she'd like to present to us in terms of some of the, the information we've asked her to collect and we're really going to be presenting here during the, the